Good evening, and welcome. Good evening. We're going to go ahead and say, welcome to our May 5th, once again, a single de maire, regular scheduled city commission meeting. We're happy to have each of you with us. We ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the items or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions that are not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing the yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment forum, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the people, for the, excuse me, this opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green forum will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting. Order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place at, either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the March 3rd, 2021, and the March 17th, 2021, regular city commission meetings.
Shall move.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. And moving on to the agenda items for five is our approval of our agenda. Our city manager will address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to pull item 8A from the agenda. Item 8B, move it to the end of the consent agenda and take action on it at that point. Add item 8G, Volusia County JAG Agency Funding Allocation to Consent Items, and add item 8H, Allocation of Black Week Sponsorship Funds to Consent Items.
All right.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
Thank you, Commissioner. And who was the second?
Commissioner May.
Commissioner Reed and Commissioner May was the second. All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
We'll now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item 6A is the Development Administrative Services Presentation, Overview of the Housing Authority of the City of Daytona Beach Agency Purpose and Function. Terrell Bates to report.
Good evening, Mayor Henry, and good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Bates.
They're going to get you the clicker.
Oh, I was. I'll tell you what the red bag is. I'll hold you in suspense till the end, okay? So the Housing Authority was formed as a result of your resolution number 38-21 in 1938, long before any of you were born. So that's how long we've been doing business and providing service in the community. We've operated continually since that time. And although our name is Housing Authority of the City of Daytona Beach, we're not a department of the city. Our Board of Commissioners of five is appointed by our mayor, and that's our connection with the city. We receive funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development almost exclusively, unless we're administering some special program for the city or the state. We don't get funds from other sources. We just had our audit, and this is who we serve first, the housing choice voucher. And I just would like us to really pause and think about this. We administer about 1,200 housing choice vouchers, which allows people to go out into the private market and rent from private landlords. In 2020, we paid $8,244,603 to private landlords in this program. And this has been continually, every year since 1974, when vouchers came. So it's grown a little every year, but this is a significant financial impact to our community. We also administer vouchers for veterans called a VASH program, where we help homeless veterans. The referrals have to come from the VA, and they receive supportive services from the VA, and they go into rent from private landlords as well. And then last year, we received two increments to assist homeless disabled persons. So we're able to get people directly from the shelter, from other places, so they don't have to remain homeless if they're disabled. We got an award of 65 vouchers. We did really well. HUD gave us 18 more. We took care of those really quick, again, because we were able to get people from the new shelter, as well as some of the other shelters, and people off the street. We work with Continuum of Care on that program. And then, because we did well, HUD gave us 75 more vouchers. So those just came online in March, and we're continuing to add to helping with homelessness in that regard. We recently began to have more of a focus on homeownership, or a focus on homeownership. So the vouchers can also be used for homeownership. And we, in partnership with Homes for Hope, and Ms. Hussani, and other partners in the community, are working with nonprofits or individuals who want to purchase a home and use their voucher for rent, I'm sorry, for mortgage instead of rent. About two months ago, our board approved the use of some residual funds that we had to allow for a $15,000 down payment. And the first closing occurred a month ago for a young lady who's been paying rent for seven years, has children, works, and now she's a homeowner in the 32114. At time of admission, 75% of the applications or the applicants that we accept have to be extremely low-income people, but they don't have to stay there. The idea is wherever they are, and their income is very low, we want to help them and provide some of the services and programs that we can, along with community partners, so that their income increases, their lifestyles increase, their children do better, and that's part of what the programs are about. On the right are a list of where we have housing and the number of units. So again, you know, in terms of being a landlord, until recently, we were a significant landlord. You know, now we have mega landlords coming. And, you know, even the mega landlords, and I won't mention anybody's name here, but there's a brand-new construction project, and they've committed to rent to about 100 people who have Section 8 vouchers. So everybody recognizes the value of this program for our community.
Very good.
So we're required by HUD to have an independent audit, and GAAP accounting is the accounting principle that's used. The audit was presented to our board at our April meeting. And in short, the net investment capital assets is about $15 million. Net restricted position is about $31 million. That's money that has to be spent exclusively on programs. Unrestricted net position is about $6 million. So the Housing Authority manages a $55 million operation here. Partners, I came in 2018, and I have to say, people just line up to want to do for our community members. We have had such amazing partnerships. I could have slide after slide and just add more and more names. We listed some of the people who have most significantly and repeatedly supported the Housing Authority, but the support that this community provides for the Housing Authority and people we serve is amazing. These are just some of the events of partnerships that have happened. Some things of note, COVID hit in March of last year and around April. HUM partnered with us and began delivering or preparing groceries at the Peabody Center, Ocean Center, Ocean Center. Every single week, every Tuesday, 625 bags of groceries were packed from April to November. Our maintenance staff, who couldn't really go into apartments to do maintenance because of COVID, became the delivery team, and they packed and they delivered. So again, you know, that's something, a lot of people that live in housing work in a lot of service industries. They weren't working. They were worried about where food was going to come from. The kids were out of school. How am I going to feed my kids? And HUM just stepped up, and one of the things in the very beginning that I asked was to see what was in the bag. So some of you know me, and I just dig and dig, and it was high-quality food. It was fresh food, and it was good food, and it really served our families well. We opened with the support of Career Source. Last year, a program called LEED, which supports getting a GED for people that don't have to live in housing. They can live anywhere in the city of Daytona Beach and a few other zip codes as well. And then getting them apprenticeships and internships in work, where they get paid to learn a skill, and then getting supportive services and case management as they get onto a job for up to a year. That award is a state award through Career Source, and it's $180,000 a year, and it was just renewed about two weeks ago. And it also provided three more jobs. So we're an employer in this community as well. Last year, we had Girls on the Run. Girls on the Run had been available in schools, but it wasn't available to the Housing Authority children because of the fees. I believe that Sheriff Chitwood and other people made donations that allowed us to have a team and have our staff become certified so that the Housing Authority children could participate in those programs. So I could go on and on and on and on, but the partnerships are just wonderful and the, just the recognition of the importance of the people in our communities and how they need to be served to be able to be the best. And we do have some really, really great people living in housing. This, again, was the food pandemic. I think in another slide, you know, I talk about the city. And if I started to name names, I just couldn't name them all, but COVID testing, Drew Driscoll, you know, got in touch with us. We were able to get onsite testing at the Windsor and Mailie, where we have 300 people who are either elderly when they move in, 65, or disabled. They were the hot, you know, at the very high level of people who were susceptible. We had no deaths from COVID. We had not only testing, but then later on, Drew and the Health Department came back and did onsite vaccines. And then the bottom part is just, you know, a fun activity. There was an Easter egg hunt and barbecue at Caroline Village. And of course, you see the kids just having a good time. Very often, the city has provided facilities for us. Some of the commissioners have provided money to do things that we're just not able to do, and our communities are doing well. We have had family self-sufficiency graduations, and you see the amounts of the checks. So we have programs where we help participants in both programs work on education, work on attaining better employment, and increasing their income. And as they're going through the programs, escrow accounts are established for them, and they can graduate with, there's a check for $14,000. So that lady, again, can go buy a home, she can buy a car. During the course, they're getting information about credit and savings and hopefully making good decisions. But there are a lot of, just a lot of really good programs. To the right is the very first family that closed on the home in 32114, and she's happy. She cried, and I cried with her. So again, it's just great to have the opportunity to see that the work we do really does impact the lives of people. This was just another partnership with the city. The city received CARES funds, and if, maybe you call it something different, but the city got money to help with rental assistance. And as of 31, so in November-ish, October of 2020, the city partnered with us to be administrators of this program. We sent the applications for final approval to the city, and the city disbursed payments of $609,000. And we just put two little testimonials. So these are people that the housing, they've nev, they would have never come to the Housing Authority, ever. Their landlords would have never called us, and the people would have never come, because they were people that had good jobs, good careers, good education, until their business closed due to COVID. And the program allowed for rental payments of $1,500 rent for up to two months. So $3,000 is what some families got. And again, they weren't our regular customers. So we made friends with new neighbors, new landlords, and a lot of people got helped through the city's program and through the partnership with the Housing Authority to administer that program. We received $986,000 in HUD CARES funds in connection with COVID. So we bought a lot of sanitizing equipment and products. All of our residents got masks and gloves. All of the staff got, you know, safety equipment to work with. We had to reestablish how some of our offices were set up, so we bought furniture, you know, kind of the barriers and sneeze guards that you have. And probably one of the most significant things, both for the Housing Authority and our residents, was use of technology. Because we have all become Zoom and Teams experts and all these meetings, but our residents are also participating. We're holding our monthly resident meetings on Zoom. So our residents are learning a skill that, you know, is going to help them wherever they're going back to work. They're learning how to use technology better. We were doing exchanges of information by email and using Adobe eSign. So the residents have learned a lot. The staff have learned a lot. So we just tried to make the best time of it with COVID that we could. And so that's our presentation. This is, again, something that we have done with our CARES funds, is prepare little emergency kits for hurricanes, because we know it's coming, and we know a lot of our residents will not, even before COVID, they wouldn't go to shelters, but we're just going to make believe this because of COVID. And so in the bag, there is, there are like light sticks, a little poncho, an emergency first aid kit, water packs, dry food, you know, like that MRI military kind of food. And of course, we're encouraging residents to put their medicines, emergency things that they might need. So we'll be distributing 625 of these bags over the next few weeks. And so again, you know, we've taken, like they say, take the lemons and make lemonade. We've taken COVID and tried to use the money to do as much as we could for the residents. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I do want to share, Mayor Henry, you shared with us an application for home repair for seniors. I don't know if you remember that. We applied. We are requesting about $751,000, and that money would serve elderly persons. In the 32114 is the area that we targeted in getting home repairs that will help them remain in their homes as they age and make it safe for them. So Daytona State College partnered with us to provide occupational therapists. We think we have a strong application, and hopefully, the next time you hear from us, it'll be to say that we were awarded.
Okay. I'm hoping so. I do remember.
Yeah.
Because it's one of the issues, and we have a program, obviously, with the city, but it doesn't go far enough.
Right.
I have, you know, the waiting list is great. So I'm hoping, once you guys are approved, we can.
We can connect.
Send some of the people over.
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you.
Absolutely. You were the one that wanted to have this, and I appreciate you for asking us to be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Bates, I just want to say an excellent report. We are elated to have you in that position. You are doing so much for us. I have never heard a report this good before, have you? From the Housing Authority, you are moving mountains. And I know they really appreciate you there, and we appreciate you here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question while we're on this, not a view of it of the, well, this is later.
Let's move on with the agenda. Slow us down.
Okay. So we're going to move on to item number seven, which is citizen comments. This is for individuals that want to address items on the consent agenda. And I do have one speaker signed up, Mr. John Nicholson, who's going to speak on a C and E, I believe. There he is.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. You had the streetlights on your agenda. They started it several months ago, not in my neighborhood. From my house, the Russian Project, to university, there are six of the old-fashioned metal tops and about 20 missing lights. I don't know if they're ever going to go back in or not, but those tall poles always had a light at the bottom. None of them have them anymore. I'm assuming they just wiped them out.
Did you replace them, John?
Nope, none of them. So it stopped at the Russian Project. I came from Bel Air this morning, and I just happened to count them. And the five lots, I know Paula doesn't like the idea of infill, but remember I brought that to you before, the idea of infill, especially for the need for Mayor McCloud-Bethune? That street will never come back unless there are bodies, people living on or near that street, to go to those stores. And Mayor, you had mentioned there were 1,000 lots. Is there a list for those lots? Remember, 20 years ago, George Burton asked what property the city owns? And it took a while to find out what we owned. Where are those 1,000 lots? I'm presuming most of them are in the midtown area? And that would be a wise move to give almost all of these to her to build houses? Because if she's going to build a house, we're getting virtually nothing in taxes from vacant land. So putting a house on it would do two things. It would put bodies into midtown, and we would get taxes out of it. So I would ask you to expand that five lots to as many as possible. Thank you.
Well, thank you for listening to me on the radio station that you frequently go on, and unfortunately, you often share misinformation about the issue of affordable housing with the community. And so I too agree that we want to give as many lots, not just in 32114, to this project, but others who are willing to invest in the affordable housing. We recognize that this, tonight, as we'll address, is an important milestone for our community that I hope will go a long way in helping a lot of people. Okay, is that?
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we already have a motion?
We don't.
We did not? Okay, go ahead.
Shall move.
No, we didn't count it. Okay. The motion is from Commissioner Traeger, second from Commissioner Reed.
Reed.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. So I am going to move back to item 8B, which was pulled for discussion for the amendment. So I'm going to read that into the record. It's a resolution approving the second amendment to the Riverfront Espinade Development, Maintenance and Lease Agreement between the city, the city's Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Brown Riverfront Espinade Foundation, Inc., to clarify the party's rights and responsibilities for maintenance and operation of the lease premises and the city's Sweetheart Trail, adopting a revised Riverfront Espinade Master Plan, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment to the agreement and providing an effective date.
Shall move.
And Mayor, on this item, to be consistent with the outcome of the Ciara, again, I'd ask for a motion to approve the second amendment of the lease as revised to include the Sweetheart Trail within the lease premises.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
I'll move my second.
All right. We have a motion, have a second. Are there any questions, comments? And, okay.
And I've had no other speakers.
No speakers? Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. Now move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Finance Department Utility System Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF Loan 2021. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance of the city commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, relating to the state revolving fund loan program, making findings, authorizing the loan application, establishing pledged revenues, designating authorized representatives, providing assurances, providing for conflict severability, and an effective date.
Shall move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Move on to item 9B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Beaches ISB Plan Development Redevelopment, PDRD. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the lands development code to rezone approximately 1.4 acres of property located at the northeast and northwest corners of International Speedway Boulevard and Peninsula Drive from BA Business Automotive and BR1 Business Retail One to PDRD Plan Development Redevelopment, approving the Beaches ISB Plan Redevelopment District Agreement, authorizing redevelopment of the property with a variety of retail, restaurant, and other commercial uses, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Shall move.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner May, a second from Commissioner Traeger.
And I do have a number of speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Our first speaker is Rob Merrill, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. Rob Merrill, for the record, 149 South Ridgewood, here with Dr. Chuck Duva, my good friend and client. We're here to answer any questions. Parker Minchburg is here with us as well. I just want to take one second before we offer to answer any questions by saying, you know, this is a project we've all, this is an area that we've all been concerned about for quite a long time. The city, the city commission, Jim Chisholm and others have really, I think, done everything the city can do on this piece of land that we're all worried about and concerned about breathing life back into. And I think DOT and the county have partnered with you guys, and you're going to hopefully do good things here pretty soon to upgrade the street, landscape, hardscape, et cetera. But what we all know is, what we need is private investment, right? There's your guy. It's like Hyatt Brown always says, you know, when Mr. Green shows up, things happen, right? Sorry to call you that, Chuck, but the guy's here, and he's assembled land on a piece of ground that we all think is blighted, and we all believe is blighted. You know, I, so I'm here really to thank Chuck and to hopefully get you guys to thank him for this investment. I think he's going to do great things here, and I think it's going to be contagious. So I think East ISB, I mean, we've got a lot of ground over there that, when you look at the aerial, you realize, it's got a lot of potential, a lot of potential. And, you know, for guys like Jim Cameron have to bring people here, you know, for economic development projects and go somewhere else instead of coming over this beautiful bridge, you know, and landing in what sometimes looks like Beirut. And Jim, I think, you know, getting rid of some of the stuff that was really worse, God bless you, but what we need is, we need somebody spending money, and that's what Chuck's going to do. So, you know, I, and Ruth, you know this, my dad's medical office is down there in the 60s and 70s, two doors down, and my grandparents, two streets over, raised five kids, you know? So this is a place that I'm here to thank Chuck personally, too. So with that, any questions you guys have for either Parker or Chuck or myself? Happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, it's been a pleasure working with Chuck, and he's been really a partner with the city, because he went beyond his project, and we had a long discussion about different options that could help the area, and he's invested more money into that area by acquiring other properties, too. So what we need is other investors and developers that have the vision to try to improve that part of our community, to be a part of making Daytona Beach a better place to live.
Thanks.
And thank you, Chuck.
Well, thank you, Jim. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we've got speakers.
I do have additional speakers. Our first speaker is- Our first speaker is Jim Cameron and on deck is William Bitteroff.
Again, I'm Jim Cameron, Jim Cameron Consulting, Daytona Beach. And, but I am gonna go back into my past life in the sense that what Rob was talking about as far as this project goes, I mean, Chamber, we, and they are still very much in support of this, that, I mean, this was project number one as it relates to transportation issues and such. And some of y'all participated in volusia days at the Capitol, which was virtual back in mid-March, and the state FDOT Secretary Kevin Tebow discussed this project in detail and all. So you can see it's on their radar screen as well up there in Tallahassee, and they know how important it is to us, though. But, but Rob is right, though, I mean, it's just that this is something, though, that Chamber felt that this was very much important, though, because it's the gateway into our core tourist district, though. And so we very much see the need for it, so wanted to go on record in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is William Bitteroff.
He was back there, but he's not back there now.
Wait for the rest, or?
Oh, well, if he comes back, we'll, is there another speaker?
I don't have another speaker.
Well, we'll give him one minute, see if he's out there anywhere.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, let's move on. I think there's people out there, okay.
Get you ready, huh?
Oh, well, we've got a... You gotta stick around when your item comes up, Bitteroff. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's, you say thank you. It's an understatement to say that we've been waiting for someone to come along and sort of take ownership of what I believe is a prime place. I mean, we all know the traffic that's received there. We all know what it looks like. It has been described by a lot of people as looking like Beirut. Doesn't look nearly that bad. We really haven't seen Beirut. That's a, that's a, we shouldn't quite say that, knowing all the things that have happened in that region. But it is far beneath its potential. And I said this when you first started to illustrate your plan and make your commitment. We have a lot of confidence in you.
Mr. Bitteroff.
And we appreciate your commitment and I'm glad that you guys have worked well together and we anticipate that that will continue into the next cycle with the next manager. Mr. Bitteroff?
Sorry, sir, sorry, I was late, sir.
Your time is up, buddy. You just, we've already gone past. The item is done.
Okay, good, okay.
And, yeah, I'm sure you were supporting it, right?
Yes, sir, I was, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Look, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move on to item 9C, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, right-of-way vacation notice requirements. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 3.3.1 of Article 3 of the Land Development Code relating to public hearings and notices to modify notice requirements for right-of-way vacations, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Shall move.
A Delgado and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no speakers, all right. No questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The second public hearing is set for May 19th. Moving on to item 9D, it's a Public Works Technical Services Division, Avalon Phase One Preliminary Platte Approval. This is a resolution quasi judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary plat for Avalon Phase One, a mixed-use subdivision located on 761.4 plus or minus acres of land located west of Interstate 95, south of Granada Boulevard, and north of and adjacent to the Minto Margaritaville Development, and providing an effective date. Shall move.
All right, we'll take a motion from, I'm not sure who was first, Commissioner Cantu, and second from Commissioner Delgado. All right, we have any speakers?
I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here and Christopher Warshaw on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right, no questions?
And no other speaker.
And no other speakers. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Okay. Well, now move on to item 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Main Street Tattoo, rezoning to Plan Development Redevelopment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone approximately 0.2 acres of property located at 405 Main Street from RDB2, Beachside Redevelopment Specialty Retail, to PDRD Plan Development Redevelopment, approving the Main Street Tattoo and Gallery Planned Redevelopment District Agreement, authorizing redevelopment of the property with a variety of commercial uses, residential and other accommodation uses, and temporary uses including special events and weekend outdoor art displays and sales. This is subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Shall move.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Have no questions?
I would like to say something. I like this and, but I do have a problem once we amend the code, if he sells it, okay. What I would like to see, because we do have other businesses down there that have to pull permits to do the same thing. And so maybe if we can amend the code and try it out and maybe sunset in a couple of years and, you know, and if it does good, so they can use their property as well as like an art, you know, to supply, just, you know what I'm saying?
I don't disagree with that and I think that it shouldn't be a carte blanche into perpetuity type decision because we don't know who the next owner would be. I have been supportive from the beginning of the project. It's just a matter of, should it be into perpetuity? So how, could you describe?
Well, I'm saying, okay, we, well, we go ahead and pass this, but then I have talked to, is Jim Morris here? Yes. I talked to Jim about maybe if we can amend the code, because we do have some other businesses down there, I believe Boot Hill, some of Teresa Doan's property, I think Main Street Station, and he's gonna be able to do, like, art displays and they should be able to do the same thing, because we've been talking about just Main Street just not being Bike Week. And just try it out on a temporary basis and if we like it, we continue it, maybe give it a two years and then have, you know, then have it sunset.
Well, Jim, could you address what you mean by change the code and for how this will affect other businesses?
Let's start, maybe at the beginning.
Yeah.
So from the standpoint of the code, it's a commission decision to determine whether they want to change the code. And in the conversations I had with Commissioner Cantu, I said it really is a question for the commission to consider whether it wishes to emulate in other properties on Main Street what this development agreement does for this particular property. This particular property, as you know, the agreement runs with the land as it relates to other, and it's private property where they would have their open display. There are some other properties on Main Street that have open space that conceivably could do something, too, if we establish conditions for people to do it. I think Commissioner Cantu's concept is to allow those other properties that have the space to do it on their own land, not on public property, could also be able to do that thing. And of the properties that I can think of, I think she named them, would be Boot Hill, some of the Doan properties, Main Street Station, the Corbin Building, you know it as 77 Main, those are the properties, I think, and perhaps Cruisin' Cafe, they have a kind of a big porch that's their property. So those are the ones I can think of that would qualify to do things on their own land as a regular event permitted by the Land Development Code if we establish some conditions. So if that occurred, the staff would work with the manager's office and everyone else to come back to the commission to describe how that could occur. And I think the Commissioner Cantu's concept in respect to sunset is to have that concept have a sunset provision similar to what you did with food trucks, to determine if you think it works or if you think it needs to be adjusted, so you don't create vested rights in those properties with that open space. And again, I think that the motivation is to try to enliven Main Street, but I've emphasized that it's a commission policy question to direct, and then certainly that goes through the manager and staff would pick it up to try and bring it back if that's what the commission wished to do.
Mr. Morris, does this Land Development Code change impact only Main Street or would this impact the entire city and could MMB, MLK, and Orange have benefit from the same extension?
Well, it's not my idea, it's Commissioner Cantu's idea that she mentioned to me and I've discussed with her methodology. The commission can give us direction as to what it wants to do.
So does that mean that we could extend the same courtesy to the other areas in the city that need the special events without requiring permits?
I don't think that's impossible, no ma'am, I don't think so. Haven't thought about it on a broader scope, but I think it's certainly doable in some instance.
I think it's definitely something we should consider if we open it up to one vendor, if the other vendors that, or the other businesses have the qualifications or meet this, have the standards as far as space and they can do it. I don't see anything that I wouldn't support. I would support that.
Okay.
I would support it, but I would prefer to see a one-year sunset.
Yes, ma'am.
I think two years is a bit much because, one, we opened this up like for Seabreeze and I'm telling you, there's some atrocious-looking places over there that we've allowed them to come outside and do this. So we definitely need some standards on them maintaining the area and keeping it clean if they were to go outside. And I would like to see a one-year sunset rather than a two.
Yeah, I'm fine with a one-year sunset, but I'm just talking about Main Street. We've had a lot of talk up here about Main Street and saying...
I'm saying I'm for it, Commissioner Cantu, I just want a one-year sunset.
So I wasn't talking about Seabreeze, I mean...
Oh, no, no, my example was that we allowed Seabreeze to do this and I'm disappointed in how they have not maintained. So I'm saying I'd like to see one year to make sure they do maintain. So I'm for it.
My position is I support you also, but what's good for one is good for all. And so the other parts of the city could also benefit from this change.
I concur.
Well... I agree and I think that's something we can come back to.
True.
Yeah, let me, let me, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, I just wanna say, and I was gonna mention this in my comments later tonight, as we kinda go down this road of creating an art district and community, which is where I foresee us going. I don't wanna piecemeal the process. I liked what I read in the paper about the land and the fact that they, and I'm not saying that this is really piecemealing, I'm okay with, let's do this, but let's make a broader plan as a commission, that this should be a high, high priority, that we create, you know, an art commission, perhaps, in Daytona Beach, where there is a body that we appoint and that we create standards for our, for the murals that we have agreed to do. We wanna have standards, we wanna have standards for creating a district of where art is embraced, more than one, but they could, and we've talked, that I know of, in three districts, Seabreeze, Main Street, and MMB. So I think there should be a commitment that we have three, but they all are connected but individual. And, and, and we make a commitment to supporting them and ensuring that those who get city resources express a commitment to sustaining them. So overall, there just has to be a standard and, so, you're not gonna be here, but the new manager, who I'm sure is listening, this is gonna be a part of his, his charge to developing these standards and, but they're ready. So I guess, the reason I'm going off on this diatribe is that I think that it's important that we not create little pockets and, you know, because they're all not gonna be the same.
That's true.
See, and I'm not, I don't wanna be the one to decide all of them, but I envision, if it were just me, that the Main Street Art District might try to have a theme that's surrounding bikes. I envision MMB surrounding history and the history of the, of the midtown community. And I don't know what Seabreeze could have, but it could be something related to Beach, the Beach and history in that region. But you gotta have standards in order to be great. And I, something that I've learned and learned to embrace, partly the older I get, but the more I understand that when you don't have standards, things decay and they don't meet your objective. So I'm good with this, let's, I think we should go with this and then prepare for a broader, bigger picture and start working on it.
So to give everybody a starting place, about two years ago, the city manager, myself and the chamber, went to St. Petersburg. We've been discussing this for roughly two years. Roughly two years, we've been going over how this is possible. We actually have a few people in the community, which I think you've met with already, who've gone so far as to create a nonprofit and start the process. So I'm glad that we're moving forward with some things that we've seen in other places. But St. Petersburg has an arts alliance, which is a fantastic model already in existence and quite successful.
Ms. Morris, is this the right, I mean, is this the, as far as the, as I read the PD, there's a provision for basically like special, special events, micro special events in the PD?
Yes, sir. The, it's, I don't think it's quite fair to compare it that way. Here's an important factor about the PD. It's private property, special events ordinarily may be private property, leased property, or even part of the sidewalk. So it's limited to their internal courtyard. When you read the PD, you'll see that it doesn't provide for it to be on the sidewalk. In fact, sidewalk has to be kept open. And the reason I referenced the other properties I did is because there is open privately-held space in those properties. So the first part of the discussion that the commission at large talked about, that really speaks to that part. I think the mayor's part of the discussion kinda moves over to the mural concept and a broader concept of some other overre, not overreaching, overall scope of approach to the streets as well. And so there's two concepts really discussed, and I'm sure there's other underlying concepts that will come up. But as it relates to the PD in the first part of the question, it's the use of private property to do things that the code presently doesn't allow you to do. You wouldn't come to get a permit for that because it'd be something permitted under your land use. There probably would be a BTR permit, which is business license, in order to accommodate it. But other than that, at the moment, I don't have other thoughts, but it's a fairly new thought that we've gotta go through and bring back to you. Does that respond to your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was, if that, if this was the way to affect what the mayor and the others are talking about.
Well, I think that this, excuse me if you will, this one is a concept of one person's idea of how to do something with a piece of property that happens to have a courtyard kind of property within it and probably not another viable use for it other than to utilize it for some sort of customer space. There's other open space properties that would do that, but the broader concept the mayor has talked about, I think, reaches beyond private property really to view from public spaces and so on. And it is a different and broader concept, and I think Commissioner May alluded to that somewhat as well.
But as they were saying earlier, this would then run with the land, this modification?
With the PD, it runs with the land. With the modification to the code, with a one-year sunset, it's there and it's cancelable by the commission if you care to let it sunset or you could care to extend it, depending upon what you think. You also could create different standards or modify standards. As the PD is written, it does run with the PD on the particular subject piece of property as written, and it would stay there indefinitely as far as I understand the law.
But we could remove that clause and still allow them to do, but we're all talking about the subject of sunset provisions, right?
The commission could do that if you wished. I think the applicant probably would like to speak to that subject, and I wasn't trying to respond to that concept in terms of your hearing, but that is... But that is responsive to the question. You could do that if you wish as a commission, but certainly that's not something the applicant anticipated, I don't think.
Okay.
Good, Bob.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and it was a one-year sunset. And as we move down this road...
And I think there's actually two things, Mr. Mayor, I believe.
Okay.
You got the rezoning request, and you got the separate discussion in relation to the direction from the commission. I know they've been mixed in the discussion.
Yeah, this one, we would have to approve and then go back, correct? And then...
I don't know, let him finish.
Question I got is, since this is a PD...
Yes, sir.
Can you sunset that portion of the PD?
You could certainly put a sunset provision in the PD. The applicant would need to agree to it, or the commission would have to say, "We voted conditioned upon that." It could be done in the PD as well.
The only reason I say that, because that gets, that's the only way you're going to get consistent with everything else there, is to have this one sunset at the point that you adopt the overriding rule.
And I was thinking the same thing, actually. I was going to mention that. We don't want it to, and that's why I want it not piecemealed. It's important. Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Okay, just bear in mind, this is the first reading. We'll bring it back on the second reading. So...
All right, all right. We have a motion. We have a second, Jessica. You will have something?
Good evening. Jessica Gao with Cobb Col Law Firm, 149 South Bridget Avenue. I did just want to talk a little bit about the conditions that we have proposed here as it relates to the overarching proposal. So this one here is limited very tightly to the outdoor art display and sale. So there's six conditions that we've worked with staff on. It can only be held on Saturdays and Sundays. Saturdays, it's nine to 10:00, Sundays, nine to 7:00. You can offer the art products for sale because we want to promote local artists, but that's basically all you can offer for sale, is the actual art products. We've had it defined as fine art and handmade craft. Temporary signage would have to be in accordance with city procedures. There can be temporary tents set up, like you would see for tailgating. If the artists want to have a little white pop-up tent and a table, they can do that. Live or recorded music is allowed, ancillary to the sale, so kind of background noise to draw people in. And then no outdoor storage is allowed on the site unless there's an artist that'll be there on both days, then they can have something stored, you know, under waterproof coolers and things like that so that they can reset up on Sunday. So that's what we've envisioned for this site. We hear the discussion on sunsetting and things like that. I think you've got a property owner who's ready to go out and make this a reality and something they're really passionate about. So if they're, if you need a year for them to prove themselves and show, you know, how this works, I think that they're open to showing that it can work.
Yeah, and I think that's beautiful, and I would envision it, and I didn't mean to muddy the water with the other diatribe, but I just think this could be something that would fit into that anyway. I don't really think it...
Absolutely. And I think it plays into their vision. This has been a long road for them. I think this started a year and a half ago, thanks, you know, COVID and things like that that impacted the timing process. So, you know, they're ready, hopefully, to be the first ones out there to show you what this area can do.
Great, thank you. I think it's wonderful. Yes, any other comments?
Thank you. I have a question for you, sir. So if we move forward with this, how soon before other areas could go ahead and do the same kinds of events or...
Yes, sir, I'm struggling to understand what you're saying.
I'm sorry. So how soon after we, after this conversation, can other communities start to have similar events or tents or whatever the case may be?
So in respect to the rezoning request, it's scheduled for a second reading, I think, in about 30 days.
She's asking about a more comprehensive LDC change.
I understand. I'm comparing the... So the rezoning would be finished roughly 30 days from now. We have to initiate a proposal to amend the Land Development Code to accomplish what the commission is discussing. That would go through the planning board and so on. So probably the timeline for it realistically is from now till six months from now. It could be finished within five to six months. It all depends on how fast it moves, but we will move the first part of this in respect to emulating the PD plan for the art district portion of it. That part will happen quickly. The other broader concepts the mayor discussed, I think, probably take a little bit longer, although certainly we've written some stuff about that already. The intention isn't to slow the PD down. The PD would be passed in roughly 30 days. The Land Development Code amendment is what would be required to do it for the other properties on Main Street.
So I want to be very clear on the further implications, the positive ones. Sorry. I want to be clear on the further implications, the positive ones of this adjustment in the Land Development Code. So we have properties located on East ISB. Would they be allowed to have events, art events, whatever the events are, because they have large parcels of land? Would they be able to do something with it now?
Well, the commission's going to give us direction as to what it wants us to do, staff, what you want the staff to do, and certainly East ISB. There are conditions that we could use for it, and as I said, I've been trying to answer Commissioner Cantu's questions, not to formulate a proposal to bring to you. So my first answer is, I think it could be done. It just depends on how we write the standards and what we do and what the commission tells us to do.
And I think it's also going to take time, Commission De Maire, to put together the council that the mayor has suggested so that there would be representation and continuity with all three areas in regards to the art display. So I would, I don't think it's going to take six, that just might be, he's really guessing.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
I think, I think once we give the charge, they will move because everybody wants it.
We will move it out. It's just a timeline.
But there's just a process that's got to be in place in order to make it happen.
So maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding something. So the project on Main Street is one entity with specific rules related to that business. Then the arts concept is something else. And then we have, to me, a third, we have a third situation. We have existing businesses who would maybe like the same leeway as Commissioner Cantu was stating, but extending that to other properties is something that we're discussing separate from the arts council? I'm just curious.
I think what that means in it, if this is what you would like to do, I think they should go through the same process that they went through. But I'm not in a rush to encourage people to do that because I would rather us not piecemeal it, but they certainly have that right. We have an applicant who is sort of ahead of us, so we don't want to hold them back. But others who want to join the same, have the same right should go through the process that they've gone through rather than being able to simply jump through the hoop that following them. They didn't put in the effort that they've put in. And it's not that we want to stop someone, and we do want to be fair, but I think they should have to go through the same process.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Any other?
Yes, sir, no, sir.
All right.
When this comes back on second reading, Mayor, the commission will have the choice then to either exclude the temporary use, sunset it, or just adopt it as proposed. So that'll be something you'll decide at second reading.
Okay, all right. We have a motion, have a second. No further comment. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven, zero.
The public hearing is set for May 19. Moving on to item 10B, it's the Finance Department amending master lease agreement with Truist Bank and FLC for the purchase of 20 police patrol vehicles. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution of Schedule of Property Number Two to the Master Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement with Truist Bank, sponsored by the Florida League of Cities, Inc., authorizing the lease purchase financing of the acquisition and installation of certain equipment herein described, authorizing the execution and the delivery of an acquisition fund agreement, authorizing the execution of such other documents as may be necessary to complete the transactions completed hereby and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May. All right, so you have any questions or comments? No questions? All right, motion, have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven, zero.
The public hearing is set for May 19. And that was our final item on the agenda.
Okay, we start tonight with Commissioner Henry.
Or Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, I'm doing it.
CRE, okay, Reed.
All right, I just want to share one thing with you all as well as with the citizens, that the annual shred event that the Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated host is going to be held on May 15. So any businesses or private folks who want to get rid of paper and bills and things, private things that they need to shred, it's a community shredding event. We have secured a document destruction company, and it's going to be held at Mainland High School. Crown is going to, Crown Information Management is going to be the company that destroys these product, this information. We want you to bring your sensitive documents, and they will do the rest. Crown will do the rest. So on May 15, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, please bring anything that you want to be shredded, and we will graciously do that for you. We want to acknowledge the sponsorship that we received because of COVID. We didn't do this last year, so we had funds that were left to help us to do it, so we didn't ask for any money this year. But former Chief Craig Ripri, City Commissioner Janet Henry, and former City Commissioner Rob Gililand, and the faculty and staff of Mainland High School have all helped us to make this come to fruition this year. So please, if you have anything that needs to be destroyed, spread the word. We have this truck there, and it's going to be there for those hours. Again, that's on May 15. Let me go back up on my little thing here. May 15, from 9:00 AM to 12:15. And of course, we're, you know, being CDC responsible. The truck people will take your information. We're just going to be there to staff it. Okay?
Thank you.
That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Traeger?
Well, I want to say happy Cinco de Mayo to everybody and happy birthday to our mayor, Eric.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
This is my born day. Thank you, appreciate that. Commissioner Deech?
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor, nothing else for me, thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner May?
Happy birthday, sir. So a couple of things firstly, you guys can pass this around. Hopefully, you've got Facebook pages. There is a fantastic event that I've been trying to share with people, and it is tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 7:00. They're offering free tuition over at Daytona State. You've got to go in, get enrolled, there's nothing stopping you. Some of the programs involve office support, AutoCAD, CPT, CNMLing, HVAC, Lean Practition, Microsoft Office Specialist. I've been trying to have them out in the community, so post them to your different networks. All you have to do is show up, there is nothing stopping anybody from being accepted. The key for me is, when you're at the university, it's from 3:00 to 5:00, sorry, they have all these other resources that you can access, like the Men and Women's Engagement Center, where they will help you with other services that you may need in your life, right? So it's very important for tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00. Then also, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and you would most likely know, and Ms. Bates is still here. Is Ms. Bates continuing with Housing Authority? And I say that because I'm on LinkedIn, something popped up, and I have a curiosity about it. Is Ms. Bates in fact staying with Housing Authority or is she leaving Housing Authority? I don't know which that is.
Ms. May, that's, that's not within my purview or...
Could we find out from Ms. Bates?
I have no directive to answer that.
I thought, I thought I saw something on LinkedIn, I received a notification, I was just wondering, only because she's this fantastic asset, and I'm hoping that it's, I'm hoping I misread it in actuality. But she's a fantastic asset, and I appreciate everything that she has been doing over the past two years since she's been there. So if anyone has that, send it to me, but I could have sworn I saw something like that.
I hope you misread as well, Commissioner May.
Pardon me, ma'am?
I said I hope you misread something as well.
I wasn't sure, okay. And then that is about, that is about it for me. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Yes, I have a couple of things. You should see this on your, on the diocese, everyone.
It's in your folder. It's in the Manella folder that we set on the diocese.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
This was actually done by AARP, and it's involving accessory dwelling units, and we've been talking about affordable housing. And dwelling units, ADUs, are kind of like the mother-in-law apartments. And I remember, I believe it was my first or second meeting when I was elected, Commissioner Henry said something about this. And we have a lot, a lot of them, and it's not vacation rentals, I'm not talking about vacation rentals. We have a lot of them around here, and I know there's a lot of them being done illegal as well. And we're trying to solve the affordable housing, and we have so many. And I, I think the Land Development Code was changed March 5th of 2015, and I'm wondering to see if we can change the LDC because I believe all the property owners, this would help, for example, disabled veterans, homeless, seniors, students. And there's a lot of them with like kitchenettes, four kitchenettes. I've actually went around and saw a few of them. So if this is something that we can discuss or if you guys...
Who can, well, first of all, I appreciate you doing the work to look into this. There are many, many parts to affordable housing, and I think we need to try to get as many of them right as we can. Tonight, we made a big step in one of the major pieces. But from my understanding and what I've read, I think this could be an additional great step. Bob, you want to share or go over any parts of what she's really referring to? Was there something else you have?
Yeah, there, there was a, actually, Bob had told me about it, and there was a Florida statute, July 1st, 2020.
That's the boarding part.
That was actually passed as well to let us do something like this.
That's the, that's the, one of the key parts. But, yes?
Well, under your current code, accessory dwelling units are not permitted in most all residential districts, or there's maybe one exception for one district. So it would require an amendment to your code, and state law, as mentioned, does expressly authorize amending your code by ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units to be used for rental affordable housing. So it is something we can legally adopt at your direction.
What are some of the, go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Now the mic is on. I'm sure there are particulars to the, to these, what kind of dwellings are they called?
Accessory.
Accessory dwellings?
Correct.
Because I have complained several times about some of my neighbors that are already renting storage units, and I know code has been there, and I know there's a process with code, so I'm not, I'm not pushing code. So if we're going to do this, I think there needs to be definitely some, some standards in place because these people are living in a storage unit, but they happen to go into their homes to take baths, so they're not even, you know, complete dwelling.
Yeah, this is not what I'm talking about.
Any proposed amendment would have setback requirements, lot size requirements, unit size requirements, kitchen requirements, so there would be some livability standards built in.
Okay.
And I believe there is a lot of them in Daytona right now, and I haven't confirmed this, but I was told back when GE was here, they had a problem, and that's where they all started originally popping up.
What are some of the drawbacks? And I'm just talking to us as a discussion item, because if we look at some of the accessory dwelling units that have been created on the beachside, they are a problem now. You know, and I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, because we still want to have, you know, standards, as you all are saying, and we want things to, to be elevated in the way that they look, you know? And so I guess, are we asking the staff to bring back a proposal and then we look at those standards? Do we have other communities that we would look at, Bob? How would you craft this and help us, help me to see that I would see something that's taking us to another level while meeting a need?
Well, we could do it citywide, or we could do it in certain areas. So that's kind of up to you, but I think you're most concerned about those livability, livability standards, is what I'm hearing. So I think staff would have to come up with some standards for you to review at a later date.
Mr. Mayor, I think probably if there is significant interest here, then we can come back with some options and recommendations that, that might indicate where it would be appropriate in, in some cases or maybe not in others. So you could either do that by zoning or a couple of other ways that they could, you know, have it adopted.
Am I wrong? I actually thought there was some areas that are allowed as of right now and some that are not.
Is Dennis here or Mr. Morris? Yeah, my understanding is that they're not currently allowed. But I'd have to have a case reference.
You have, you have a number of them that are already pre-existing that are here.
Right, right, but I, I might be... Right, right, but I, I might be wrong, but I was told there, it was some that are allowed in certain areas as of right now and then there was some that weren't.
There may be, I'm not sure.
So, but I think we need to extend it because I know there's tons of them out there that's illegal right now and they're being done, this way we can control it more as well instead of them hiding.
Okay.
With, with that, is there some way that we could get some more information on how many units that we actually need for affordable housing? Cause I'm still in the dark right now as to whether it's affordable housing, if it's workforce housing. Other thing I'd like to know is if we are doing affordable housing, um, accessory dwelling units, will there be a restriction in terms of how much the landlords can actually charge for the units? And then also I was appreciating your literature and, uh, second page to the back, they address how these sometimes become short-term rentals. So I just want to kind of keep in mind how the city is planning on addressing that. And if that becomes a city-wide situation, how do you work with a, with an accessory dwelling unit eventually becoming a short-term rental? And if that's the direction we're going in, then let's be forthright about it.
Okay.
So if we could research that, that would be great.
No one has said short-term rental up here, but.
It's on the second to last page of the information.
Well, this was just letting you know about ADUs. I have not said short-term rental and, and actually said it right up front. Um, and, um, the state statute on this, um, Bob, it does control how much they can charge per rent, am I correct?
We would define what affordable housing is. Typically, it would use the 30% standard of, uh, of the income for the family unit as defined. Uh, so yes, all those terms be defined. We wouldn't really want to touch, uh, short-term rentals because of the state preemption and, and, um, and, uh, possible, uh, loss of our grandfather status on regulation of short-term rentals. So want to stay away from that. But, uh, we, we would, um, we would address, you know, what is affordable housing? We would address, um, perhaps also what would be, uh, required to be produced by the landlord to confirm with the city that they've met those requirements. State law anticipates an affidavit would be filed, um, expressing that it's being rented for affordable housing.
My biggest query would be how many we need and also where they would be going. If we already have an abundance in one community, would they then be dispersed throughout the city? Zones fours, five, six, one, two? Because we have quite a few of them on beach side already.
Right.
And so I'm just curious as to how the other communities will be impacted and, you know, is it something we just do in, maybe in zone four, something like this that they, that they really embrace?
Actually, um, I wouldn't mind actually because in Pelican Bay, I do have, I did have an older gentleman that his relatives lived in New Jersey and he wanted to stay in his house. And I used to go to the grocery store and get him things and he had a pretty big house. So he put a separate door in, I guess he got a permit, I'm not sure, this is before I was elected. And he, he had two bedrooms and a bathroom and he was going to rent it, but then he passed away. Now his, his kids are here, so I wouldn't have a problem in zone four.
Could you tell Captain Lee what that address is? Could you let Captain Lee know what that address is, please?
He passed away, did you hear me?
I heard you, I'm just joking with you.
Okay, all right, well, uh, I think we, uh, thanks again for bringing this to our attention. And I, I understand that, you know, some people are going to come up with NIMBYism and are not going to want certain things in their neighborhood. But this is a road that we're going to go down. And, and, and I appreciate you, um, in, in taking the lead to bring it to us. I do recall when you talked about it and now, you know, we're evolving and this is a part of it. So it seems as though unless someone has an objection, staff should bring us something back for our consideration. And we can do more research on our own to, to develop what we're comfortable with.
Yes. I'd like to interject, Mr. Mayor and, and my colleagues, that I recently saw a presentation where they took the, um, I guess you would call it like that, the back part of an 18-wheeler and made affordable housing out of those, um,
Containers?
Containers. And I thought that was rather interesting. Oh, yeah, and it was, it looked pretty sweet too. But I do have something else that, um, that I hope to bring to you, to you soon, um, regarding zone six and affordable housing.
So for the past two years, Commissioner Henry and I have agreed on the fact that we really like the idea of container homes. And I'm not sure if separately or together, we've been asking, you're smiling because I've brought this up on many occasions in our conversations. And the only thing I've asked is, is there a community, is there space, is there an area that you would have an interest in doing that? Also systematically through time, past two years to be exact, we've been reducing the footprint required smaller and smaller. So my question is, are we ready yet to explore or accept a proposal of somebody who wants to do a container home type environment? Happy to bring you forth the information from Gainesville where they're already doing it. And I believe also the Deland Deltona area, they've also put in a community. It requires a small footprint, the setbacks are different, um, parking is different as well. But if that's, if we're going to do this, let's explore, I guess, other opportunities. So I'm happy to bring that information forward also.
All right, yeah, sounds great. Sounds great, um, okay. So staff, understand what we're asking as it relates to, uh, Commissioner Cantu, everybody good?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other issues, Commissioner?
Oh, yeah, I do. One more, um, I'm sure there's someone up here has been getting the same phone calls as I have. Um, a cell phone tower. I know Margaritaville, I'm getting a lot of calls and they need a cell phone tower. I know some of my constituents in LPGA. And I noticed on November 20th, 2013, it was brought up about putting a cell tower, um, over there by the tennis courts that we own. And then it was supposed to come back on the agenda on February 19th of 2014, but it never ended back up on the agenda. Then it came, um, through on February 18th, 2015 and we passed it, but nothing ever happened, so it expired. Um, I have been talking to Beatt from Avalon and he said something, but that's not written in stone about maybe putting in a cell phone tower. But Jim, could you kind of tell us how we can go about getting a cell phone tower? Because Avalon's going to have a big problem.
Let me just kind of bring a little light to it. The first, first one, the first request was at the tennis center. And at, after a public meeting and a, and a meeting with the neighbors, they didn't want it there. So that site was, was not chosen. Later on, we went to, uh, we had a request from, uh, someone who was going to put the tower in at the stadium and we approved that. But he failed to follow through and, and pursue with the project. So it isn't anything we've done or not done.
My question is, okay, if Beatt decides not to do this and he's supposed to come back with some plans, what can we do and who do we contact? I mean, we have the land to actually bring in this cell.
Our site's still available for that purpose.
My question is, who, right.
Well.
Can we go back and contact?
It's back to the industry, it's the industry who does it.
Right, can we go back and contact the previous person?
We can contact him, but, uh, you know, and see what he's, you know, for some reason he didn't want to come, go forward. If it was financial, it might've been, who knows?
Right.
Could have been the, um, you know, the phone companies for all we know is, didn't need it. But, um, but that's a problem that's been out in that area ever since I've been here.
If we can find someone to do this, we have the spot for it.
Oh, we have the spot.
We have the spot.
I remember, we approved it, I was on the.
It's all approved and it was, we have a contract that, uh, that, uh, the attorneys put together for that, for that project.
Okay, now would, I guess we'll just wait and see what Beatt wants to do, cause he had mentioned something, so, okay. And, um, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Um, good evening. Just wanted to say this is a fantastic packet, I've already thumbed through it and I'm really excited. I, thank you because this is something that, um, I've been talking about for a few months now. I know with COVID, it's been hard to get back to this, but it is something that, um, I, I think is very necessary. And I think it's very, um, it's something that we can actually do. I, I know Sandy had, had brought this up, uh, maybe a year, year or so ago. We, and we started, she started talking about, um, these accessory dwellings. She and I are supposed to meet and she's going to give me, um, more information because I do think she has good knowledge, um, about accessory dwellings. So, um, I think this is important because this is something that we can do right now. It's, it's, it's not something that we have to wait on or that there is so many requirements that we can't move this forward in the next little while. So, um, that's why I want to stay on top of this. I, I hope that staff will come back with something positive for us very soon so that we can see what direction we can go in with this accessory dwellings, these accessory dwelling units. As far as cons, the biggest con that I would see, especially in the area in which, um, most of my residents live, is, is parking. You may have the space, but you don't have the parking and then you have people parking on grass and you have them parking where they're not supposed to be. So I could see that as being an issue and from what I've read, that has been one of the issues. But I do believe that we have wonderful staff that can help us overcome any of those things. It, it's not a, it's not an end-all for this. I also want to tell Mr. Mayor, happy birthday. Y'all don't know this, but my mom and dad had six children and the most aggravating child out of all six of them was Mr. Mayor. Every sibling says it, he was the most annoying kid in the family. People don't know that about him. So, um, but either way, he was a wonderful, wonderful brother growing up. Prayed, prayed for me constantly, would wake me up sometimes in the middle of the night praying for me. So I don't think any girl in the history of forever could, um, be more blessed to have a, a big brother like you and the rest of my big brothers, because they would feel slighted.
Oh, thank you.
In high school, we were, he was senior class president and I was, what, sophomore class president together? So, uh, we've been kind of doing this together for a, a while and I've enjoyed the ride with you. Lastly, I want to say happy Mother's Day to every mother out there. Whether you are a mother by birth, whether you're a mother by, uh, you took a, a non-traditional role to, to motherhood, whether you're standing in the gap for, for those who are motherless or who have recently become mother, who have recently become motherless, I want to say thank you.
Pet mamas.
Pet moms. But, um, I want to say thank you to all the moms. It, it's a hard job, it's very rewarding, but it's a hard job. And, um, I just want to tell all moms, thank you. And I want to say happy Mother's Day to the most phenomenal mom in the whole wide world and that's my mom, Agnes Henry. I love you mommy. Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
Yeah, well, I will say, um, she did not tell a fib. It is true. But they would also say that, um, that phenomenal mother that she just illustrated, they would say I was her favorite. And that is true too. So, yeah, I don't know how you do both. You aggravate the siblings, but you please the parents. And, uh, you know, hey, uh, it's, it's a great day and, uh, I, it is my birthday and I'm very grateful. My children will be delighted because I probably will make it home before, well, the younger one should be asleep, but she, they'll, she'll stay awake maybe tonight. They came to my job and had lunch with me today because we didn't expect, uh, that I would be home. And so they, they weren't happy about that and want to celebrate and I, because, you know, I don't think they want to celebrate me so much as they just want to celebrate. But at any rate, I'm, I'm grateful, that's probably not true. Uh, I have a great family and, and they, they want to celebrate me. But I have some things, um, when it was Commissioner Henry's birthday, she was ready to go and I kept going. But you know that I don't discriminate and my list is just as long tonight as it was then. So I'm going to go ahead and do it. First thing is I, I really want us to be, um, and we've done a great job of being a parks city. Our parks are really elevated to a new level in the last four or five years. And I'm as proud of that as I am anything. It's one of the reasons I'm really excessively proud about what's going on down there. I think it's going to give us one spot that says, yeah, you know how to do it. And then you can go anywhere in all the small parks, you know how to do it in Daytona Beach. Well, one of the things I want us to do i- is, and we have a lot, we're putting a lot on staff, but, but I want to be phenomenally great. I think that as we are developing and we've missed the boat, and I live in LPGA where there are no parks. And that was a mistake. And, and the people who live in LPGA have been failed by that. It's a failure. It's a 25, and it tells us that when you make mistakes, um, you can't fix them, really. And it's, it's that way with infrastructure, it's that way with parks. And so I think that with all of these developments that we've had, you know, you go over to Mosaic, fabulous park. They're modernizing and, uh, they believe and they understand that where people live, they want parks. But if you go over to Bayberry, they've got one park that they created in order to keep the pedophiles out. And that was the reason they created a park. You may not remember that, but I remember it was a part of, but it's the only park they have. They should have more than that. And so what we need to do is we need to have a, um, plan or a ordinance that requires that developments of a certain size and scope do so with parks in mind. Uh, because one of the things that we now as a city have to be prepared to do is that we have to build some park in the LPGA region. I have to take my kid, um, all the way to Derbyshire to play basketball. It's unacceptable, should not happen. And, and so, um, staff got to come up with a strategy, um, to figure out how we can do parks, a park out there or some. But most importantly, these new developments, that's a cost that they should be bearing. Uh, because we want, you know, one of the factors that people look at for a high-quality community is how many parks and whether you can walk to a park. I think our city has about 60% of our residents live within walking distance of a park. I'll have the, how far that is with me tonight, but I have it somewhere written down. So I want, I've always had a goal of making that 75, 80% increasing that number. And that's one of the issues that I talked with Avalon Park about. Uh, their parks will be available to the city and if you visited their sites, they do believe in parks. So that's number one. Seabreeze, uh, signs, the signs on Seabreeze that we discussed and, and you guys are taking down. Well, you know, one of the things about that is that people are looking at them. Let's look at them and see if there's any way for them to be restored before we just take them down. If they can't be restored, well, then that's another thing. But I think it's better that they be restored and that's not taking away from his idea, because we want those. The other thing is that we talked about those, um, not the arches, but the lani that you talked about, that they're having some uniformity. You know, I was having lunch with a very prominent member of our community who is doing great work in helping us with the infrastructure. And when we walked out, the first thing that they said was, I'll do something about these streets, but you've got to do something about those, those things, whatever you call. but you've got to do something about those, those things, whatever you call them. Onings, yes, pardon my language or lack thereof. You've got to do something about those. And I said, yeah, we talked about that the other day. So I, I don't see things like that, and I'm the first to tell you, that I don't notice. But now I'm starting to look at our city in a different way, like a more mature person and more like my wife, who has expert vision. But I'm starting to see, and I, I think that's something that we do have to look at. Main Street Lights, you said at the last meeting, and I did talk to Louis, so he's developing a way of coming in and showing us and taking pictures. I'm excited about that because we're gonna discuss that at our next meeting of the action group. Suburbia Park, it's a beautiful park. I don't know, you know, but I did say that if, I don't know where we are as it relates to a possibility of doing things remotely or in any way differently, but I'll talk with you about that offline. I'm expecting a Midtown Resolution that is suggested by a resident that encourages us to visit Midtown, to shop in Midtown. So we're gonna take a day and I want us to, all, all of us, through social media and through our various platforms on this day to highlight Midtown and say, go shop. And one of the ways we can do that, one of the things I've been doing is when I go to small businesses, I highlight them, I take pictures, let people know that I've been there. We've all got to support our small businesses. But as a part of this resolution, I want the city to advertise and, and support. And then we'll just move that around. So it's a lot of good ideas that come from residents. And then we talked about the Art District. And so that is it for me. Thank you all.
Can I say my thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot. Human Resource, they've been helping us with the vaccines, a lot of them. And I was wondering if we could call Lori and David, the CEO, and David Santiago in here and maybe give them a proclamation, have you give them one?
Oh, absolutely.
For all the vaccines they've done for us?
Absolutely. Now, and I'm, I'm gonna highlight them on the next
Yes.
episode of the Making a Difference in Daytona Beach. This current episode, which is coming out, is highlighting First Step. But I'm gonna highlight them. And so might be good to get them in at the next meeting. And we might be able to put that in as a part of the video or something.
Okay.
But, but that, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak to the awning issue briefly?
Yes, sir.
You know, one of the things that before I was involved in City Commission all that I knew about was that, you know, it was like, it was always a battle with the city over signage. You know, there's a ratio that you're allowed and there's always kind of a gentle delicate dance that we do of, you know, how much space you're allowed and all that. But, you know, the awnings could, if you wanted to find a way to encourage business owners to update or replace their awnings without offering them any money, if we could maybe come up with some understanding that they might be able to use the awnings as part of signage without counting against their total allotment, as long as, you know, then maybe that would be an incentive for them to go and replace those awnings because they could then be a form of signage. Because a lot of those businesses, they don't have a great place for signage. So they're, they're either have to put it on their door, which can't, doesn't always look great, or, you know, find some lighted sign box or something somewhere else. But if they could put it right on the, on the cloth awning or the fabric, whatever it is, that would give them a reason to go and pay that cost now to, to replace it. And at that point, we could have a common, you know, design requirement that it has to match, you know, at least the look of the others adjacent to it or something like that. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if that would require too much of a change to our sign code or sign, it's not code, but whatever the part of our code that deals with signage. Or if you find that would be ugly or tacky looking, I don't know that it would be. I think, I think it would be a good incentive. So I, I don't know what you think about that idea. But when you walk around, at least take a look and see if, if you like the idea at all of up there as well as extra space.
And then also, as it relates to awnings, I am in Zone 3 and Zone 6 as well and most likely, I'm in Zone 5. If you drive down MLK, there aren't any awnings. And I've noticed that for a long time, especially the stretch from Orange Ave to ISB. There's one place there on the corner. They now have a hair salon and they're close to Orange Ave that has a natural awning that goes with everything else. There isn't one. It does not look, it could look very nice. They might need some different considerations because I'm not sure if it's the cost of getting an awning. I can tell you that the awning on my building was $5,000 when I first opened my studio. Though awnings are not inexpensive. And so for some areas, that might be the issue. Matching funds, I'm not sure how that would work, but we might need to consider enriching some of those grants specifically for awnings or possibly reducing the amount that the owner has to put up front.
It looks so good in her area, that area of, is it Magnolia? It looks so nice back there with all those awnings. They're all the same color and they're all the same look and feel. It just makes it look like this is an occupied, vibrant part of the city. Whereas there's parts of Seabreeze where you're like, here's a prosperous, thriving business and here's one with plywood over all its windows, you know, and then here's one with, and so it just, stepping back and looking down the row, you see this whole thing. It looks like, oh wow, this is a well-care for, well-preserved, occupied area of town. And I'm always impressed when I go in that little, that little section of the road where your, your business is. It's just a neat little area and I think the awnings really help bring it together. So I, again, I don't know how much the awnings would cost if you don't have them already there. But I think that'd be a good use of funds. I wish Seabreeze had CRA money to do something like that with. But certainly Main Street does. So maybe there's some opportunities for the Main Street people to do something like that.
Okay. All right, yes, sir. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I say one more thing? You know, as the employee engagement coordinator at Embry-Riddle, sometimes my lives intersect. And today it did. I created a flyer for our First Step Shelter to encourage our employees to participate in the Walk a Mile for First Step. So I just want to kind of, I pull my flyer up. I just want to kind of announce to, to the citizens that between May 21st and May 31st, you can do your own walking. You know how you used to walk and get people to pledge for your walk? So it's just walking a mile. If you want to establish a team, a team of four, you can get together and, and walk this. It's a, it's an opportunity for us to give back to our community and to get some exercise in. So I'm sure it's out on your website, but we want you to be involved and engaged and to help. And I shared one of the stories of one of our, our citizens that went through the process to try to encourage my employees to get engaged. But Embry-Riddle is going to sponsor four teams to participate. And I'm also encouraging the individuals to also sign up. But we're gonna pay for four teams to go out there and represent us and to walk a mile for the citizens of the First Step Shelter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Awesome. Awesome work. Beautiful. All right. Any other comments? None? Okay. It's a great day to be in Daytona Beach. And it is a great day to be a citizen of these United States. Good night. At this time, we're gonna take public comments. We're gonna go ahead and get started.
Okay, I believe Mr. Bitteroff has left the building. Okay. Our first speaker is George St. Pierre and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
This makes twice in a row I'm first. My name is George St. Pierre. I'm the owner of Jungle Georges at 1022 Main Street. I'm here once again and thank you for your comments. And you guys do understand that these scooter companies have GPS coordinates that if the scooter is actually right here, it can run. And if it is over here, they can shut it down. And these companies refuse to do this. If you look at the entire beachside alone, you have A1A and the sidewalks, you have the boardwalk, you have Peninsula, which none of the tourists go down, or Halifax. And besides that, you got in and out of all your little neighborhoods. I know Ms. Traeger lives in a neighborhood that she doesn't want these scooters traveling in. There is no wheres for these scooters on the beachside that anybody really, really wants them except for the company that owns it. Now, it sounds like it's really fun, but if you have a 12-year-old with his little six-year-old brother weaving and not of traffics, I get hit, I got hit twice this week again. And my sidewalk is less than 48 inches. I see older people jumping out of there all the time. If you give these businesses that have these rental places out in front and code enforcement hands out a ticket to them, they have 17 days to comply. Within 17 days, they call and they say, oh, we're in compliance. Then they're like, okay, you're in compliance. The next day, they got the scooters right back there. It's an ongoing thing. You've got to untie the police's hands. You've got to either be able to have them pull over the people on the scooters and immediately impound these scooters because the company is doing nothing but laughing at you. Everybody on this whole council here has tried to work with these people. They have thrown you underneath the bus. They've thrown you all underneath the bus. And nobody seems to do anything about it. It's about time for our city to put their foot down and say, you know what, enough's enough. What is it gonna take? What is the final straw? Is it gonna be an old lady knocked out into traffic and killed? A little kid crushed by a car? What will it take for you guys to understand that this is a definite problem that's gonna continue until you do something about it? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there anything that can be done with, it's on, with regards to impounding these and, and a high fine to get them back? I mean, a really high fine? Because something has to be done. I agree. I'm watching these things and it's nerve-wracking. I don't want to completely take them away. I don't know if, if that, but I would definitely like staff to come back with something that can be done that...
I think we've already told them to come back with something. So it's gonna, gonna happen. Yes.
They don't want them back. They can easily afford to get another one.
Okay.
They've impounded millions of them.
Okay. Is that, is that, let Scott come on up.
Sell them. Can we sell those for the children?
Scott Lee, Police Captain, our city. Yeah, we've been pounded several of them. There is a pretty hefty fine. It's $200 to get it back. It does not seem to be a deterrent because their position is, well, we're just not gonna come get them. They're actually creating a space issue for us at this point and a disposal issue. Yeah. Just giving you the information.
Can we actually find the company though?
I think that's probably a better question for, for us to discuss with legal and see, like what was the extra step that we could take?
And I don't mean 200 bucks. I mean a real fine.
Right. I get what you're saying.
Taking away licenses and, and a $1,000 fine to the actual company.
Currently, the micro mobility devices are, are, yeah, the companies are operating without a business tax receipt. There's nothing for us to even really kind of take back. But I can discuss that with the legal department and see if there's anything further we can go to address that.
Because it sounds like they're just kind of like, whatever, they'll just keep on doing just what they want to do.
Right.
And we got to send a message. You're not just gonna come and do just what, what you want to do. There are gonna be some parameters. You're gonna either follow those parameters or get your crap and, and get out. That's, that's my, my take.
I hear you on that one.
Thanks.
Okay, our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is John Nicholson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Street. I'd like to commend the governor for us being here in City Hall tonight. He went on TV and had you all to open up because you all was abusing your power by being just sit outside in the hall and not being, not violating our rights, really. Because we pay bills here and we should always have access, not only to City Hall, but to our public service, which are. I thank him tonight. I'm very proud of what he has done. We need to make that happen. Also, I'd like to commend Keith Willis for getting our Midtown Concert Series started again. It has been missed in Midtown. A lot of people have been asking me about it. I told them that they're gonna open up soon. So I saw it tonight on this flyer here. For starting in June, the concerts will be in the Daisy Stocking Park. And they're gonna have quite a few bands. They're one of my favorites, a love band. Also, I'm ready for our new city manager to start. I am so proud that we have finally got a new city manager. I think he will do an excellent job for us here in this city. He will change some of the wrongdoing that's been going on here for a long time. And we are very, very proud to have him. He's been one of my Facebook friends for many, many years when he was at the Brooklyn University. And I did advocate for him to be the one to represent. We need good representation up here. That's the only way we're gonna have progress. Also, I had some people that came to me. They was concerned about this motorcycle club that you all let in the redevelopment area. They don't have a sign or anything. I passed it on the way here to City Hall tonight. There is nothing on the window. They put it right across from the Brooklyn University. A lot of people are complaining about why did they allow them to come there and put that in Midtown? They have a redevelopment board and they're not getting anything accomplished as far as having us separate and make sure that they don't have that kind of place in that particular Midtown area. So we're looking forward to you all stopping that in the past.
Our final speaker tonight is John Nicholson.
Before John comes, I'd like to also commend Keith Willis for executing the plan as brought forward to staff from Commissioner Reed to reignite the Midtown Concert Series. So thank you for your idea and thank you to staff for executing the, the idea.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue, Daytona Beach. Mayor, Dave County started something 70 years ago where their Recreation Department took a map out and said, okay, we need this land, this land, this land, this land. And when it was developed, the developer donated the land and those developments around it donated money to buy additional land so that there was always going to be a recreation within walking distance of all of these new developments. Not every single development would have a park, but there would be a singular park that they would all enjoy. We may want to look at what Dave County did. They also have a huge tropical park. It's an old racetrack. And it has tennis courts, all kinds of stuff. It's packed every weekend. Secondly, the pier. I think this is the fourth time in five years we've repaired the pier. And in 40 years, been repaired five times. Once when we got it and three times recently. There's something, either we're fixing it well or we're not asking what needs to be done. How do we get a list of those 1,000? Because somebody asked me for that list. Mayor, how will we get the list for the 1,000 lots that the city owed? Because George Burton tried for a while to get the list of city properties and couldn't get it. So...
Just make a public records request of all the lots that the city has available. I don't know that they have, have them, they're working on putting them. And not all developer can, not all of them can be used. Some have, are harder to use than others. And so there's a picking order to it. But, you know, that's outside of my purview or knowledge base.
Suzanne was on the CRA, Main Street CRA, and she came up with an overlay for the artistic overlay for Main Street. It went from Harvey to Auditorium. And we would allow the people that have houses in that area to be owned by artists and they could create and sell from their property. So it was a kind of a, an overall thing. We may want to look at that. Suzanne came up with a great idea. Accessory dwelling units. I know we talked about dorm dwelling and we talked about short-term rentals. I've got three on my block. I don't have a problem with it where I'm, I'm living, but I would absolutely not want it in Bayberry or Margaritaville or whatever. We would have to look at that. And then the police are having a hard time with the homeless on the boardwalk. Apparently their hands are tied. So we need to look at what they are allowed to because they're saying, well, I can't do anything because we're not allowed to do it.
Okay. You can't control HOAs in that way, by the way. Bayberry and all those would not have accessory dwelling units. Am I right, Bob?
Yes, the HOAs may have independent rules.
Yes, they have independent rules.
I'm on Pelican Bay for a lot of years.
Yeah. So, okay.
That's my final speaker.
That's our final speaker. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Thank you. Good night.